Welcome, welcome to September twenty-second, two thousand and sixteen meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Councilmember Eddie Smotherman has our prayer and our pledge.
If you would bow your heads. Lord, thank you for this day, beautiful day in Murfreesboro. I thank you for all the blessings that you've given us. We pray for our country. We, we're certainly going through turbulent times and we know that we have challenges ahead, but I don't think there's anything that love won't overcome. And so, we just pray for love and understanding and trying to continue to work as one and, and remember that it's, it's all in your glory. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get too far along, if you're out in the audience, we had, I think it was Tuesday, we had a kindergarten class that was in here eating lunch. We were talking to them. We had a fifth grade class right after that, so.
If you smell something under your seat, you're probably.
French fries.
I came in here yesterday with Mr. Turnbull, the attorney, and he can tell you, there was still remnants of all kinds of stuff where they didn't have lunch from here, so. Mr. Lyons, I think you have someone that you want to introduce?
Yes, I would love to. I'd like to bring Mr. Paul Boyer forward. Paul Boyer's been hired as the city's purchasing director. Paul has had a long and distinguished career in local government. Spent some time at the Pentagon early on in his career, worked for some cities in Northern Virginia, but here in Tennessee, served as city manager of Columbia and city manager of Oak Ridge. Also served a time as city manager of Lake Worth, Florida. I can tell you that he has done a great job coming here and helping our departments procure things, so his experience and progressive nature is going to be well welcomed. And I know you will see him at the podium as time goes forward, so we did want to introduce Mr. Boyer to you.
Thanks.
Very good, welcome.
Thank you.
Rob, Oak Ridge has one of the best recycling facilities in, in the state. We'll pick his brain good.
Enda, if there's anything we need to, to talk about, and I need to make sure, I need to abstain from item E that's on the consent agenda when we do make a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye, abstaining on E. Okay, you have minutes of the August eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen regular meeting, twenty-second, special meeting, our retreat, twenty-fourth, special meeting that's on the twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan, the twenty-fifth, a regular meeting, September first, a special meeting, September first, a regular meeting, and September twelfth, a special meeting. Ms. Michoto, you've been busy. Thank you. Any additions or deletions to the minutes?
Hearing done, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move into second readings and we'll consider for passage on second and final reading, ordinance sixteen O Z thirty-six, to rezone an area located along Armstrong Valley Road, a single-family residential eight, RS eight district, two thousand sixteen dash four twenty-eight.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move into new business and consider for approval, a renewal of certificate of compliance for a retail liquor store for Barbara Hudson Frye and A. Curtis Hudson Jr. at Bubba's Wine and Liquors, twenty-five ten South Church Street.
Mayor, this is just a renewal of an existing, longtime existing store, and this is not a public hearing, it's just a renewal of their certificate of compliance.
Is everything in order?
It is.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
With friends like this, who needs enemies? Pursuant to resolution sixteen R P H thirty-nine dot one adopted by the city council on August eighth, two thousand and sixteen, conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to rezone approximately ten point three acres located along North Thompson Lane in Wilkinson Pike from single-family residential fifteen RS fifteen district and light industrial LI district to commercial medical CM district and gateway design overlay GDO two district. High Point Limited LLC applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the September fifth, two thousand and sixteen edition of a local newspaper. Mr. Blomley?
Good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. The subject property is located at the southwest corner of North Thompson Lane in Wilkinson Pike, right here. I told the cable department that I'd be happy to be the first one to use the telestrator.
Nice. Thank you.
We're excited about our new technology. As I mentioned, it's at the southwest corner of Thompson and Wilkinson Pike. It's a collection of what was formerly six parcels, as well as a portion of a seventh parcel. The property is to the, directly to the south of the subject property is developed with the Trust Point Hospital, which is a rehab hospital for physical and medical rehab, as well as behavioral health. And it's been there ever since two thousand and eleven. They have seen a surge in their business and have decided that there is a need to expand their facility. And so, they have requested a rezoning of the property that you see in orange on the map in front of you, as well as the property that you see in purple and light blue. The properties have two separate zoning districts right now. Right on the corner, the light blue parcel is zoned LI and also in the gateway design overlay district number two. It's a vacant piece of property, and the property in purple is zoned RS fifteen and gateway design overlay district number two. And the property in orange is RS fifteen and not in the gateway design overlay district. So, the request is to zone all those parcels to CM, which is medical office district, and GDO number two. So, the parcels that are not in GDO two yet are requested to be placed in GDO two, and all seven of those parcels are requested to be rezoned to CM. And the purpose for that rezoning is to, for Trust Point to build an addition, to expand their facilities there at the subject property. Included in the agenda materials are some, is a conceptual site plan, which you see right there, showing the proposed new building, as well as a rendering of the proposed expansion. Now, as a reminder, they are requesting bulk zoning. It's not a planned development, so any conceptual site plans and architectural renderings are meant to show you their intent, but are not necessarily a, a component of the zoning per se. The planning commission held a public hearing on this matter in early last month, and the planning commission recommended approval unanimously of this request to rezone this property. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. After we have the public hearing, the, the item will come up for a vote, and I'll be happy to come back up to the podium then, as well as you consider this for first reading. Before you hold the public hearing, though, Mr. Brick Murfree and Mr. Matt Taylor and Dr. Jeffrey Woods would like to make a brief presentation. And I understand there are some concerns regarding drainage on the property, and Mr. Matt Taylor will be addressing those drainage concerns during his presentation. As I mentioned, I'll be happy to answer any questions as well.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland, members of the city council and staff. I'm Brick Murfree, the law firm of Murfree and Goodman. I represent the applicant, the Trust Point Hospital. Excuse me that my voice is a little patchy. You know, a lawyer if he can't speak, it's not very useful, so I'm doing the best I can. Trust Point opened in two thousand and twelve. I was fortunate enough to work on the project, as was Mr. Taylor initially, and it's, it opened its facilities at ten oh nine North Thompson Lane. And as y'all probably know, it's a very attractive facility, well-maintained, doesn't look like a traditional medical facility. Its focus primarily is providing mental health care, or behavioral health care as it's known, to our community, including inpatient physical rehabilitation, inpatient behavioral health treatment for adults and seniors, intensive outpatient behavioral health for adults, as well as physical rehab. Trust Point was built to serve our community, that is Rutherford County and Bedford County. Hospitals have to go through a certificate of need process, and in, in that process, they've got to say where they're going to be servicing and who their patients will be. And so, primarily, the focus is on our, our city and our community. Before its construction, patients needing these services had to go to Vanderbilt. Often Vanderbilt is full, and they'd have to go somewhere out of state, St. Louis, Chicago, Atlanta, those sorts of places. And you have people who are needing their family around. It's mighty hard when you're having to be in a hotel. Currently, the facility has a hundred and one beds. A hundred and one beds isn't enough for our community. Initially, they thought that it would be, and it's, it's just not. So, recently, Arcadia was, Arcadia purchased Trust Point. Arcadia is a international company. They have five hundred and eighty-seven behavioral health facilities in the U.S., Puerto Rico, and the Dominican Republic. So, it's, it's a big multinational, billion-dollar company that recently acquired the facility, but it's owned and was started by a, a local boy who went to MTSU and is involved in our community, and it's headquartered in Franklin, just up the road. And this is going to be the closest site that they have to their headquarters, so they consider it one of their crown jewels. The application before you tonight is to rezone ten point two six acres from light industrial to RS fifteen residential, commercial, medical. Obviously, I've not put my PowerPoint up, but we're all right without it. And these, the campus is going to join Thompson Lane, Wilkinson Pike, near the battlefield, as well as Van Cleve Boulevard, which is the place we're most sensitive to, being the interaction with Van Cleve, which is single-family residential, as well as the interaction with this facility and the battlefield. So, the proposal is to add onto the existing hospital to build an additional two-story hospital and an additional two-story office building. Trust Point, like I said, is currently undersized for our rapidly growing community. Trust Point is currently near at a hundred percent patient occupancy all the time. Trust Point must expand in order to meet the current needs of our community, as well as the future needs of our community. Trust Point's plans are forward-thinking. Its idea is that the plans will allow it to grow as our community grows, and the application, the project and the application before the state will allow up to two hundred and forty-nine beds. So, I'm going to kind of hand through here real quick, council. Catch up for Mr. Taylor here in a moment. One of the things that we considered when we were planning this was being, being sensitive to the residential neighborhood on Van Cleve Boulevard. There will not be an entrance or exit onto Van Cleve for construction or otherwise. And the hospital has agreed to work with city staff on the expansion of Wilkinson Pike, the idea being, we want to create some pedestrian opportunities, and we want to allow the people in Van Cleve to have sidewalks, multi-use path, those sorts of things on our side of the street, as well as we're providing additional buffering and screening for them. Initially, in this project, Dr. Jeffrey Woods, who'll come up and speak in a minute, reached out to the property owners one-on-one, knocked on all the neighbors' doors, all the business owners' doors, and his, that was an effort for him to start creating dialogue with them, introduce himself, and discuss with them the potential of expansion. We've been fortunate enough that we've had open and frank dialogue with the neighbors. We have had a neighborhood meeting, which was well-attended. We've met at people's coffee tables. I've returned phone calls, emails, and Dr. Woods has had multiple meetings with, with the neighbors, including, one of the major concerns was our interaction with the battlefield, which is just across Wilkinson Pike. On July fifteenth, Mr. Dr. Woods and I met with Brenda Waters, who's present tonight, who's the superintendent of the battlefield, and a number of her staff, and sat down and talked about the project, its potential impact on the battlefield, and things that we could do to be sensitive to the historic site of our battlefield. A number of ideas were fostered there, and, and Dr. Woods and Mrs. Waters, Superintendent Waters, have met several times since that meeting, and we've had a good and frank and open dialogue. It's been very productive. They've given us great ideas on some things. For example, the installation of some split log fencing that mimics the battlefield fencing. What we don't want to do is make our site be intrusive, and we want to try to integrate it as we can with, with the battlefield. On July twenty-seventh, we had a neighborhood meeting, invited the neighbors. This was in addition to the outreach that we've previously done and that Dr. Woods had done personally. I sent out twenty-three, or thirty-two letters to neighboring property owners. We had a very well-attended neighborhood meeting, lasted several hours. We discussed many aspects of the project, and dispelled a lot of myths about the facility, and I think it was extremely well, it was productive. And we followed up after that meeting with neighbors who had particular questions or concerns. Just a couple of things. Once again, we'll have additional setbacks, buffering and screening along Van Cleve in an effort to help with the transition there and to be as, to have a little impact on that residential subdivision as possible. Also, parking facilities are planning, plan to be there as well, creating some separation, as well as a drainage basin. Matt Taylor with S E C is going to get into the details of the plan, but Dr. Woods is going to speak a little first on, on kind of his, his community outreach, the plans for the campus, practices and procedures of the hospital, and a little bit about himself and their commitment to the community. So, without further ado, Dr. Woods, and I appreciate your consideration. Sorry, I couldn't work the PowerPoint.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, staff. Appreciate your time this evening, the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Dr. Jeffrey Woods, and I'm the chief executive officer of Trust Point Hospital. The hospital, and to sort of amplify some of Brick's comments, Trust Point last week just celebrated its fourth year anniversary. And the care that we provide is in the area of physical medicine and rehabilitation and care for psychiatric patients in the adult and geriatric space. Our mission is to improve the lives of our patients and our families and their families, and consistent with that, we strive to be an organization that is safe, efficient, and highly reliable, which is, of course, an ongoing project and task for any organization. Over the last four years, the demand for services in our community has outpaced our ability to respond. On average, we turn away two hundred patients each month for lack of beds. We turn away an additional, roughly, three hundred patients each month for, for lack of the appropriate service line to meet their needs within our own community. This zoning change, if approved, will allow our hospital to expand its inpatient and outpatient services to more fully meet the needs of our rapidly growing community. Equally important will be, we will be able to provide critical services never for, never before available in Murfreesboro and Rutherford County. Specifically, this expansion project will provide expanded adult and geriatric services and the services to meet the needs of children and adolescents in, in Murfreesboro and Rutherford County. Those services have never been available in, in our, in our community. As Brick had mentioned, today, if you are a child or adolescent, need of psychiatric services, you are very likely to find yourself far from your family in Georgia, Missouri, Minnesota, Oregon, all, all over the country, because there just simply aren't services for them. And one of our reasons for this project is so that our community, that our families, can be close to one another at times when they are sick and when they need the support of their loved ones. During the period leading to this hearing, I've worked closely with several of the members of our, of our neighborhood around the hospital, including Superintendent Brenda Waters, who is here this evening, and her staff, our neighbors who live in the community behind the hospital, and members of the business and medical community. I'm pleased that Superintendent Waters has taken an active role in helping to define both the scope of this project and ways in which our hospital can complement the battlefield to ensure that the integrity of that sacred space is preserved and protected for the future. To our neighbors, many of whom are here tonight, I have spent considerable time meeting individually and in groups to hear their concerns and to work with them to craft solutions to meet our shared needs. Among the concerns expressed by the neighbors has been for the safety of their neighborhood and families, especially from the risk of a patient who may escape, or in our business, we call elope, from our hospital and, and disrupt their neighborhood. To address their concerns and for your edification, our psychiatric units are all locked and secure at all times, and while some of our patients are hospitalized involuntarily, the majority of them are hospitalized voluntarily. They are seeking active treatment for whatever issues they may be dealing with. We have agreed to a number of things to help support the, the neighborhood and, in, in their concern. Among other things, our staff are specifically trained in the management of psychiatric patients and techniques to prevent aggressive behavior, and we, of course, employ a professional security staff at our hospital. Some of the additional safeguards that we've agreed to with the neighbors is to provide a security fence and a privacy fence that would act as a barrier between our hospital and their neighborhood as part of this construction project. We've also agreed to create a text alert system to notify the neighbors in the event of an elopement from our hospital. We've also agreed to construct, or rather, to work with the city planners on a safe crossing location to access the battlefield, among other things. But, of course, as fate would have it, yesterday we had our first event that raised concerns for the neighbors. A man was transported to our hospital to see a counselor related to a personal problem he was dealing with. That patient was at no time a danger to himself or others, at no time. When the transport arrived, the transport attendants allowed the patient to go to a smoking area at the back of the hospital property before handing him off to the counseling staff, which is what they should have done, of course. From there, the patient apparently made the decision that he wanted to walk the trails of the battlefield, and he chose the wrong route and ended up on Van Cleve, which is the street directly behind the hospital. And apparently, he came through the tree line that separates the properties. Once on Van Cleve, he asked a neighbor for a ride, which was declined. The neighbor then called the hospital and asked if a patient was missing. By then, the transport crew had reported that this man had walked away. Because the man was not a danger to himself or others, we activated our normal and established protocols, which are to attempt to contact the family, to let them know that their loved one is, has walked away from the hospital, and we notify law enforcement so that they can do a wellness check in the event that the patient needs to be, needs to be looked at further. Within about forty minutes, the patient returned to the hospital, completed his counseling appointment, and then departed again appropriately. On my way to a meeting, I stopped and spoke to two of the neighbors and told them that a patient had walked away from a transport crew. I was then later contacted by two other neighbors who expressed their concern that a patient may have eloped from the hospital. Those neighbors and I met this morning and reviewed the incident, and this has been our practice in terms of communicating with one another. So, as a result of that event, the neighbors and I agreed that we would escalate the timeline for implementing the text notification, and that by early next week, the neighbors would provide me with the necessary information to activate that text alert system with the neighborhood. Originally, it was not our intention to begin that till after the construction, but we've agreed to accelerate that, which I think is, is both prudent and, and reasonable. I have expanded the definition of what would trigger a text notification to the neighbors to include not just a, a potential elopement, but natural disasters or serious accident, or anything else that might be disruptive for the neighborhood related to hospital operations. I also offered to provide the hospital, the neighbors with a list of the hospital leadership in a call tree, so the neighbors can reach members of our senior leadership staff, myself included, twenty-four seven, if they have any concerns regarding the hospital or its services. That call tree was provided to the neighbors today, and we're waiting their comments and feedback with respect to that. And then I also recommended that we begin a quarterly neighborhood advisory meeting that would be an ongoing meeting between the hospital and the neighbors, discussing the issues that may arise from time to time in our continuing relationship. I'm very pleased with the high degree of engagement and the passion and the collaboration between the neighborhood, the battlefield, and the hospital, and I'm certain that this will yield positive fruit in our relationship for the future. We very much appreciate your consideration of our application for rezoning, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Taylor?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Matt Taylor of SCC. Do have a brief presentation to go over some of the more specifics of the site itself, if we can get the PowerPoint brought back up on the screen. First of all, I want to start with the access points. We currently have one single access point located on Thompson Lane. We plan to keep that access point with the renovation and the expansion, and then construct two new access points, both of those being off Wilkinson Pike. We've located those approximately at one-third points between the intersections of Thompson Lane and Van Cleve. We have, again, not planned any access points on the Van Cleve Lane. All of our buildings here, our existing building is made up of a one- and two-story building, the front part being one and the two, back part being two. In the new building, we plan for the front, what's nearest Wilkinson, to be two stories, while the other three wings, if you will, will all be single stories in nature. Just like with Phase One, we understand that the drainage in this area is sensitive. We identified that with the existing facility, and we will continue to respect that with the expansion. With the existing facility, when we first started out, there was an existing detention pond there. We essentially took that and made that about three times deeper than it was when we started out. Then we also handled our own site stormwater in a passive nature through permeable pavers. While I don't know the exact answer for the expansion, we anticipate that it will again handle new stormwater in a passive nature, whether that's through bio-retention, or through permeable pavers, or another system akin to that. And then we plan on moving the existing detention pond where it currently is into the area shown here, highlighted in blue and encircled in gray, which will be in the southwest corner of the site. We will also be planning this drainage system in coordination with the widening and reconstruction of Wilkinson Pike with the city there as well. We've also planned for landscape buffers along Van Cleve, as well as along our southern property line that it joins the detention pond, along that same property line there at Van Cleve. And on the south, we'll also be constructing a fence, both during construction to keep little children from entering our site, and then post-construction for the security concerns that the neighbors had. Landscape design, as I mentioned, buffers on the south and the west. We will continue the well-planned landscaping throughout the site, have both foundation plantings, plantings along the road, and accent those with the split rail fence that Mr. Murphy mentioned earlier, that we had coordinated with the battlefield previously. And we'll continue to screen parking and trash and other mechanical equipment on-site, just as we did with Phase One. We have also provided enhanced green areas along Van Cleve. We start from approximately 50 feet and go up upwards of around 75 feet of green between our parking and Van Cleve dry lane there. Some examples of some of the materials we'd anticipate using, rely heavily on evergreen materials in our buffers to provide that year-round, year-round screen. However, we'd also supplement those with some ornamentals to provide some colors as well. The building will draw from the existing building that we have constructed on-site, as well as other buildings within the gateway area. Quality materials, we want a consistent campus, not only in our building, but our other site features and landscaping. And of course, the GDO review, which we've requested to be brought, have the whole property brought into the GDO for a consistent review process. We'll again have vertical features to break up any long walls and a varying roof line, create interest in the roof in the building. Myself or the rest of the design team will be happy to answer any questions now or after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the group? Okay. We're going to have a, a public hearing. We have a few things that we ask for a public hearing. If you come to the podium when we open it, if you'll address the council, state your name and address. Keep all comments addressed to the council. We can't ask, answer questions during the public hearing, but we'll make sure and take notes, and when the public hearing's over with, we'll get those questions answered. If you're representing a group, we ask you to, you can have five minutes if you're an individual, or three minutes. With that, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
Hello, my name is Mary Martin. I live at 2123 Harding Place. I have lived in this neighborhood since 1968. I'm well-familiar with all the attributes of the neighborhood, and I know that zoning laws are created to protect and help the population at large. There are several dangers that this project proposes for the neighborhood, and I would like to speak against it. I'm going to only address one issue, that is the water issue. Some of my other neighbors will probably address some of the other issues. The basin of that neighborhood is a large limestone rock. It's like having a very, very shallow sink. There was no flooding in that area when we first, when my family first moved into that area, because there was a drain, like the strain in your sink, that allowed, that was a sinkhole that allowed most of the water to flow through the drain. That sinkhole was plugged up in the early seventies, so that was when the, the water started flowing along the top of the rock, across the top of the rock into the very, along the very shallow basin. That's what causes the problems in the neighborhoods that we're talking about. Prior to this time, no house under, that are currently adjacent along the front of Wilkinson and the side of Van Cleve has had flooding in its foundation. It has had flooding standing in the front wall, in the front lawn. Some of the houses that Trust Point bought have had some foundational problems, but none of the current houses have had foundational problems. Trust Point plans, proposes to address this issue with permeable pavers, and that has a problem, because permeable pavers have a life of five to seven years. They clog up like your air conditioning filter clogs up. In areas that are filled with pollen or have a lot of ragweed in the spring and the fall, you have to vacuum them twice a week, the whole, the whole pavement, the whole parking lot, twice a week to suck up the clogging pollen. Additionally, if you have heavy dust, and then that, given that, if you vacuum it twice a week, you last about seven years. MTSU has permeable pavers in their concrete industry program, and they have clogged, and they lasted about seven years, and there is now standing water in that parking lot. The second problem with the proposal, with the solution proposed by Trust Point is they have not addressed the elevation issue. This is a very shallow limestone basin, and so if they build the foundations and the parking lot above the area where they are now, the water that currently stands now and that has stood there will flow somewhere else on top of that basin, and the only thing left on top of that basin are the houses that currently have residents in them. I have written some paper, and I emailed that to you earlier today. I brought paper copies. I will be happy to provide you with the paper copies. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Good evening, I'm Barbara Hudson. I live at 2107 Wilkinson Pike. I also am concerned about the water, because she owns the house next door to me. I'm the second house from Van Cleve. We do have a water problem. At certain times of the year, there has been knee-deep water in my front yard, so there is a huge issue with this. But I'm here tonight to talk about the security. We were told initially there was going to be put a aluminum fence alongside Van Cleve Lane. I'm going to talk about a sensitive subject. They're going to have people there that are mentally ill, and if they escape, they're going to go right over that six-foot fence, because I could go over that six-foot fence if I had to. So I don't feel like that's really appropriate to stop people from coming into our neighborhood. On the third Monday in May of 2014, I had an incident at my house with a person that had left there. I called the police. I wasn't sure exactly what was going on, but our neighborhood is pretty much landlocked with fence, so it only made sense when I saw this person coming down my yard, running. That's where they came from, because where else were they going to come from? Called the police. He went across the middle of my yard, jumped the fence, went over in the battlefield. Two and a half hours later, they found him. I do realize the battlefield is big, there's a lot of territory that he could have hid in and everything, so we're okay with that. But the fact is, we weren't notified. That's dangerous. I was in my car in my driveway. He was literally on the other side of my car from me, running along my driveway. That's not good. Second time I have came home, two other times, and had a message on my answering machine. I'm sure it's because I have a landline. They did not address where the call was coming from. They just told us that there was a situation in our neighborhood that we needed to stay inside and then check our outbuildings to make sure that no one was in it. I had no idea the time of the call. I assumed it was over, because I would think if it was still going on, the police would have been in our area. I didn't see that when I came in. But I also got no return call telling me that the area was now secure and that we were once again safe. So basically, I walked into my house, possibly not knowing what I was walking into. There's a lot of things about this that bother me. Once again, it's the drainage and the security. Somebody could run along Van Cleve Lane. They could jump a fence. If they're going to put a fence that is similar to what's at the battlefield, we could jump that. So that's not secure. They need to secure the area where a person can stay in that area till they can get them. I'm also concerned about the text messaging. They're not telling us a timeframe on it. I know there's a delay in getting that type of service. How soon the call's going to go out? How soon it's going to get to me? What happens if I'm in my backyard planting flowers, playing with my niece and nephew? I don't carry my phone with me. I'm not, like a young kid, I can survive without it. If I'm in my backyard, someone escapes from over there, I'm probably not going to know it till they're potentially up on top of me, and that's dangerous. So there's a lot of little issues that need to be addressed about this that, in my mind, have not been done properly. Thank you.
I have a 18-year-old daughter that just had surgery in Amarillo at 5:30 today, so I'm daddy and mommy tonight, and I do apologize, but I had no choice but to be here. I live at 1605 Van Cleve Lane. I have the corner lot from where they showed where they're going to build their drainage pond.
Can you tell me your name?
Jonathan Granton.
Say it one more time.
Jonathan Granton.
Okay.
They, yesterday, we had a situation with security yesterday. This man drove past me in my front yard and Holly in my front yard, and went to the two neighbors that are not here tonight and spoke to them. They are for this hospital being built. We are against it. I do not want them in my front yard for security reasons. He drove past us and did not speak to us. That upsets me. I have four children, and that's my primary concern back there in the back. This man didn't have, I called the hospital and asked, had someone escaped? They said, hang on just a minute. I said, okay. They put me on hold. A man got on the phone. He says, if you have any issues with our hospital, about any patient at our hospital or our facility, you must contact the police department. This was at 7:30 at night. I said, that's fine. I have the CEO's cellphone number in my pocket. I'll call him. He has not spoke to me. I did not call him. Because of the way that went down, that was wrong. Their emergency system has not dialed my phone number to, to this second to tell me about yesterday. So their emergency system has failed, but yet the city council has to agree to let them build in my front yard. I'm strongly against that. I'm the one, I'm the one that's going to wake up. They're the ones that's going to wake up. We're going to see it when we wake up. We're going to see it when we go to bed. I don't want that in my front yard. They can build somewhere else. I apologize if it came across rudely, but that's just the way it is, because they've come in and took over, and they've disrupted our neighborhood already, and they're not even there. They've not lived up to one promise that they promised me at that meeting we had at their hospital. They've not contacted me since I left that meeting at that hospital. I called him one day and spoke to him briefly about something at the house in front of me, which is their property now. But they have not contacted me with any resolutions to anything that anybody has asked to be done. So I do apologize if I sounded rude, but I don't want them in my front yard. And I'm unfortunately going to wake up and see this. I'm going to go to sleep, and I'm going to see this. And they can't say their little berm that's 20 feet wide is going to protect them, because I can see St. Thomas Hospital over their roof. So I know that that's not going to work. Thank you.
Good afternoon, distinguished mayor, and ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Roger Davenport. I live at 2116 Harding Place, which is, there's seven houses on that dead-end street, and then Van Cleve is just about a house in between us. So when I wake up every morning, I'll be looking at a big two-story building. The forestry is what I hate to lose the most. I moved there 32 years ago, and we had a lot of forestry, and my view was the park. And they explained to us that the construction gentleman did, that they would come all the way out to the street, just like the residence was 15-foot. A while ago, they had changed it to 50-foot, and, which would be good, I guess, but we're going to lose a, I don't want to sound like a tree hugger, but we, we've lost a lot of forestry out there, but we've had, I understand, growth. And they seem to be good people, and there is a need for this, and I might be the next patient to have, I don't know. But I just think they should put it in a commercial area, in the overdistinct overlay. We still have plenty of land for sale. That's, I mean, I drive up and down all the time and see all these signs up with 10 acres, 15 acres, 5 acres, right within just a quarter of a mile. I mean, right around the hospital. The park, when they, we extended the road to go on over to Broad, there's nothing can ever be built there. Those two corners are fine. St. Thomas Hospital made a nice place, and we're proud of that hospital. They put us a nice berm, and they backed up the emergency room, and they, you know, they had to raise like 12, 15 feet on that corner, you know, and it does buffer the sirens some. But when, and then we got a national battleground. If I'm looking dead toward the north out the back of my house, I'm looking straight into the battlefield. And I've raised a, a couple of children there, and it was a good, safe place and always has been. A lot of people don't even know those two little dead-end streets exist, but they do. And I, I think this is buttoned up too close to the park, and I know you have the overlay right away, but I just wish that, that they could extend this somewhere else where it's already its own commercial, because there is some nice homes out there. We're, we're proud of them. They might not be nice as some folks have, but we spend a fortune keeping them up nice. And we, we've got two families in that area, especially needs children, and, and we all kind of know each other. And like I say, I have no problem with these people. I just think they're trying to put too much. There's a lot of forestry that's going to be cut down, and we've already lost a lot due to the tornado. And then we lost a lot from the apartments behind us, or in front of my house. And, you know, they said retention pond, they're going to build some nice condos, and it turned out to be rental apartments, but they're nice. They're gonna build some nice condos, and it turned out to be rental apartments, but they're nice looking. And there's a sinkhole back there, too, that, a little cave. And so they was gonna put a retention pond in, and they, it didn't work. I mean, they had to put a pumping station on out, going toward the interstate, out Wilkinson Pike. And so that solved that problem there from the apartments. And now they're coming in from this way, and then, of course, the mall, which we're all glad to have to shop, but we have a buffer, you know? And these people is, now our view's gonna be a big two-story, big building that we're gonna be looking at when we look out, you know, across the road. And putting a metal fence up, wrought iron or aluminum fence, six foot tall, and putting a few greenerys, you know, six or seven, eight foot tall. There's not gonna be much of a buffer. And it's my understanding that some of these, or a great deal of these patients are gonna be court-ordered there. And there's a need for that. You know, the jails can't handle some of these people. And there'll be court-ordered people there, and there'll be people there that are also people that need help from drug addictions or whatever. And we just feel like bringing this into a residential right across the street from my house. Now, we was in the county when I moved there, and we had no objections, nobody. I don't think objected when y'all took us into the city. And we'd been paying city tax and county tax for eight or nine years now. I'm not exactly sure of the year. But we have no curbs, no storm drains. And I don't wanna repeat the other, some of the other stuff, but I have nothing against it. I just wish they'd put it somewhere else where we've still got some land left to sell. That's y'all have overseen, and it seems like you've done an awful good job getting it all sold off. And I'm proud to be a citizen of Murfreesboro. And I won't take up no more of your time. I have no trouble with these people, and I see the need for this. But putting it in a residential neighborhood and buttoning it up against our, that heritage is all of our heritage. Where you from, the north or where you from, the south? I think it would degrade, degrade it a little bit. And these people, this court ordered, like there was one yesterday that walked off, and I didn't get no notification. And there's a lot of forestry they, they're gonna have to cut to get back to Van Cleve. We have a great buffer from where they at now. And they have 100 and something beds, and they want to make 240 something more. Well, this is gonna triple what they've already got with this 10 acres they're wanting to get rezoned. And I just would like to go on record saying that I'd prefer they try to do their extension in some of this other land that's already zoned for that. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport.
Good evening. My name is Mark Waldrop. I'm at 1523 Van Cleve Lane. When my wife Holly and I first bought this house, we thought we'd found truly the best house in all of Murfreesboro. This neighborhood is very quiet. It's closed off, but at the same time, very accessible to everything around us. We've got the battlefield across the way from us. Greatest place to be. My girls can ride their bikes out on the street without worrying about through traffic coming through and speeding, because basically, we're on two dead end roads. When I heard this proposal, you know, one of my first concerns is if they have an entrance on Van Cleve, that's gonna completely change the dynamic of our neighborhood. And that certainly is a huge, huge concern. And they've already addressed that, at least in, from what the wording says in our initial planning, is we're not going to have an entrance on Van Cleve. One of my biggest concerns is, yeah, that's good today, but what about five years from now if we wanna expand more? What assurances are we gonna have that there won't be down the road? And that's a main concern there as far as traffic and congestion in our neighborhood. The other thing that I'm concerned about is that Wilkinson Pike is already very busy. People use that as a cut-through to get from Thompson Lane to Medical Center every day. It's difficult for me to even get out of my neighborhood to get to work on some mornings. And at least from what the newspaper said, that Trust Points can bring in 300 new jobs. Well, that's 300 cars. They're gonna go in and out of that facility more every day. And the concern is, that's just gonna add a tremendous amount of congestion to that already congested road. The, and as it is now, it's difficult to get across Wilkinson at sometimes to get over to the battlefield. If that road's widened and there's that much more traffic on it, it's gonna make it that much more difficult and dangerous to get across the street. Those are my main concerns, and I appreciate you listening to me.
Thank you very much.
Hello. I'm Dr. Mark Friedman. I own a property of 1509 Van Cleve Lane. I've lived there for the past 12 years. I'm opposed to the rezoning and the expansion of Trust Point for three points. The first point is a concern of the blasting that could cause potential damage to the houses. The entire property area is all of limestone, tremendous amount of rock, and it's all on one limestone platform. And we're afraid that blasting could cause damage to multiple of the houses that are there. The second point for my opposition is the size. Trust Point currently, as we just heard earlier, is 101 people. And they're about, this expansion bring additional 249 people, or total. That's three and a half times the size of what it is. And we know from just how organizations operate, that means that they're gonna be three and a half times the problems. You've heard several people talk about the person loping, but they're just other numbers of cars, the numbers of trash pickups, the whole variety of things that would happen. It's just the expansion of three and a half times is gonna bring a lot of problems that I'm concerned about and opposed to their expansion at that size level. And the third problem, I served as a member of the Board of Directors of Stones River National Battlefield Friends of. And I'm very, for the past three years, I'm very concerned about the effect in the battlefield. As I'm sure all of you know, Stones River National Battlefield was one of the most significant battles of the Civil War. It's not widely recognized, but people from around the world travel. There's over 300,000 visitors to the battlefield every year. Particularly, one of the most significant parts of the battle led to the Emancipation Proclamation and is of great historical nature. The 300,000 people who come and visit, one of the major points that they come to is what's called the slaughter pen, which I'm sure people are familiar with. That is a direct line of sight to what will be the property that Trust Point will expand to. And so it's gonna denigrate the historical experience that visitors have to the park. And as a member of the Friends Group, it concerns me greatly that the effect of Trust Point, as much as may be needed, will denigrate the historic nature of the park and the experience that visitors to the park will have. And with that, I thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Angela Serna. I am a historical consultant with the National Park Service. I am not an employee of the Park Service, but I work with them. And I recently completed a study about Stones River National Battlefield. It's administrative history, so it talks about the creation and development of the park since really the end of the battle up to the centennial this year. But, you know, writing that study, a major theme has been, you have this battlefield. It's only a very small portion of the original battle. So the park itself is about 700 acres, and the original battle was over 4,000 acres. So when we talk about the battlefield and then the Trust Point expansion, you know, the Trust Point expansion is on the battlefield. It's not, the boundaries of the battle don't stop with the park. And so I'm just here to remind all of you that the expansion will be over battlefield land. There isn't, you know, probably archaeological site associated with it. So, I mean, I would say I'm reluctantly opposed to the rezoning. I say reluctantly because I do believe that mental health services should be expanded. And, you know, I really do want to see that expanded here in Rutherford County in Murfreesboro. But again, you know, just concerned about protecting the view sheds, the night pollution. There's gonna be a lot of more ambient light from this expansion. They mentioned ornamental trees. I think the park would prefer more native species, things like that. It sounds like they have been talking to the Park Service and seem to be sensitive to their concerns, which I appreciate. And I encourage them to keep continuing to have those conversations if this project does indeed move forward. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no one else, we'll close the public hearing. And we'll now consider for passage on First Reading Ordinance 16039, rezoning area located along North Thompson Lane and Wilkinson Pike to Commercial Medical CM District and Gateway Design Overlay GDO II District. Mr. Baumler, we had several questions. So I'm gonna try to, before we start discussion, just to tackle these one by one. So I don't know if you wanna have the applicants to address specifically. We had a couple of comments on drainage and it being a limestone basin and sort of what I think it'd be good for us to know a little bit more specifically about the drainage that Mr. Taylor had talked about.
Sure. One thing that I would like to add, both about, this speaks to both drainage and traffic. In speaking with Mr. Sam Huddleston, our Assistant City Engineer, he has indicated to me that we are about 90 to 95% complete with the design of the road improvements for Wilkinson Pike and that work should begin on the Wilkinson Pike improvements in late 2017, early 2018. So those are near on the horizon. Mr. Huddleston has also indicated to me that a lot of the standing water that you see now that overwhelms the roadside ditches of Wilkinson Pike with the road project will have someplace to go. And so he anticipates that the road project will help to alleviate some of those existing drainage issues that are experienced in the area. As far as the drainage, drainage specific to the site, Mr. Taylor would probably be better equipped to answer those questions.
I have a question, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, sir.
Went out there to look at the site, and your proposed drawing has the detention pond in an area that actually runs uphill.
Yes.
And I've never seen water do that.
Well, you're right. It does not run uphill. However, the detention pond that you see out there now and the detention pond that we've got proposed doesn't handle any of the water that is actually from the hospital site itself. It handles only water that is to the south and upstream of us. So, such as the Roscoe Brown and a couple of the other businesses that are to the south of us. It captures their water and handles their water. So we can take that pond, and we can move it back to closer to where they are, and then release it back toward Wilkinson Pike. We handled our water with Phase 1 through the permeable pavers. And what we heard during the neighborhood meeting was that since our project, it had actually alleviated drainage problems downstream. And that's exactly the process and the design pattern we would continue with the second phase, was to pick up, you know, passive systems like the pavers or bio-retention, things that have become, there were new technologies, say, 10 years ago, that are much more accepted today and are actually encouraged through our stormwater ordinance and through the EPA and the state as being more natural and to let that water come back to the ground in a more natural manner than what we had done in the previous. I'd heard some concerns about the maintenance of the paver system. Before we, well, the very first paver project in the city of Murfreesboro was Gateway Village, which is the mixed-use project that Mr. Swanson constructed almost directly across the street from this project. That project was constructed, designed in about 2007, constructed in the '08 time period. So it's been installed for that seven to eight-year time period. Doesn't have any problems. It operates very similarly to Phase 1 of Trust Point, which has been in the ground for that four to five-year time period. Like any system, there is some regular maintenance that you have to do. With those, you're supposed to go in and vacuum once or twice a year, much like you would a normal parking lot, where you wanna go in with a sweeper, just like we do with our public streets here in Murfreesboro. If something does become clogged, they have the ability to go in and suck out the top two inches or so of the material between the pavers and replace that material in kind so that it becomes, it operates again. We had that very similar instance on a new project that we had. The landscaper did not protect the pavers, and during construction, it clogged up a good portion of the pavers. Client had to go in, pay for that to be sucked out and replaced so it'd be operational again before they could even open up. And so we have seen that in our city operationally. In addition to that, before we installed the Gateway Village pavers, we took a trip to Chicago. With any new technology, we're very skeptical. So we went up there and saw some pavers that had been in place for 20-plus years in alleyways. They had actually introduced them into public streets, much like we did here on Manny Avenue. And they're still operating very well there.
What kind of recourse, if this doesn't, or presents a problem, what kind of recourse do the property owners have? If all of this, I mean, and that may be a Craig, Mr. Tindall question, but what recourse do they have if what we say doesn't occur and they do end up with a water problem?
It's, I would say it's like any other project. It'd be solved through the court system. But I will say that we are here locally. Anybody that's dealt with us knows that we're very responsive if they feel like they have an issue. It's just a phone call away. We've shared email and phone with the neighbors. And I think you've already heard testimony that we've been in, not only myself, but as well as Mr. Murfree and Mr. Woods have been in contact with the neighbors throughout the project and will continue to be.
I've got one more question. I think it may need your opinion. On the corner there of Van, not Van Cleve, Wilkinson Pike and Thompson Lane, there's a six to eight-foot drop from grade to the, where you're gonna start construction. Are you building that up or are you leaving that? I mean, there's a huge...
What we would, what we'd do there, Mr. Shacklet, is obviously, we're gonna work our grades to match with what Wilkinson Pike is planning. If I'm not mistaken, Wilkinson Pike is being planned to be raised four to five feet between Thompson Lane and Van Cleve. And then, if you also notice, with Phase 1 of the hospital, we had significant fill on the northern portion of our lot. And so we would, again, expect some fill on our property as well. And we actually used all that fill as shot rock material, and that just provided extra capacity for the paver system.
When you did your design, just, I'm sorry, I have another question.
Not a problem.
I get mine out of the... Why didn't you connect, I noticed this 500-foot, is that a covered corridor or connector between the two buildings?
Yes, sir, it is. I think it's meant to keep the patients out of the weather and go back and forth.
Why didn't you connect the buildings and move it forward and have more separation in the back?
I think that they wanted some of those internal courtyard's rather than... And we also have to start to provide for some grade transition through there at some point.
Just trying to find the...
And there, well, and there are, there are a few more. There are some separate functions of the building itself, the existing facility. And really, each of the three wings that you see on the new building will operate as independent, different functions of, inside that building. Operations will be different. And so they're trying to segregate some operations of the building rather than having all those migrated together.
Okay. We also had, talked about permeable pavers, security. I think that was something that we had a couple of questions on security, specifically the six-foot fence.
Mayor McFarland, one thing that I would add is that during the site plan review process, the Planning Commission does have the authority, by the zoning ordinance, to add additional conditions to a site plan approval to make the transition between a non-residential use and a single-family residential use to...
non-residential use and a single-family residential use to help make that transition, whether that's in buffering, fencing, birmingham. The planning commission has the authority to add additional conditions. So if there are additional fencing requirements, buffering requirements, birmingham requirements, those can be, those can be reviewed at the time of site plan approval. And I think that as far as with security, Dr. Woods or Mr. Murphy may wish to add to that.
Yeah, Brick, I'll ask a question that I think will dovetail that is, basically, you know, the idea of a six-foot aluminum fence, I don't, not exactly sure what that means, but, you know, it seems to me like it might be helpful for that to be a little more substantial, not maybe just taller, but a little stronger. And, you know, I think that the idea that somebody would be able to just walk through the trees, you know, I mean, I know that's not a very common occurrence, but I really think we'd want to avoid that once if we could. And so, I mean, something a little more substantial would at least give time, if they have to come all the way back out to the road and circle around to get there, you know, that's just, you know, you have time to get the text message of report, the people that are in their yard by then could actually get it and know to be looking, and they kind of know what direction they'd be coming from, too. They have to kind of come around to get maybe, you know, out to Wilkinson Pike. So it seems like that would, I mean, at least in my mind, ease my mind a bit about the, you know, the security issue, I guess, what I'm saying. Is that something that you guys would be?
Counselman LaLance, we've been trying to work with the neighbors on these suggestions, and the six-foot fence was a compromise that had come up, and we did not get additional feedback as to that. But an eight-foot fence would be fine, something more substantial. I'd probably look to Matt a little bit about how we would go about doing that, but we want to balance the security of the neighbors also with safety, so things like barbed wire probably are not appropriate.
Right.
Things like that. We don't want to create a prison feel, but we do want it to, it's a safety fence, not a screening fence, because we're gonna have a big setback there. So something eight feet, something substantial, something more wrought iron, something like that, is perfectly fine. And we've been trying to feel out what would be acceptable to the neighbors and some fencing there for security purposes that's more substantial, absolutely something that's absolutely something that we could agree to. The exact design of the fence, I'd have to kind of defer to Matt, I'm not an engineer, but something that would be more substantial and would prevent migration of people from this site to the neighbors and vice versa, and hopefully, and hopefully provide some additional feeling of safety, which is, is the goal on the fence to begin with. So six feet, eight feet is great, something a little bit more substantial than aluminum is fine as well, provided we meet Gateway standards and we can, we can balance that and security issues, something we absolutely are concerned with. So eight, eight feet and something more substantial, and I might look to Matt for, for what materials.
And we could, sorry, I was just gonna tell you, I mean, you guys can get, I mean, that site plan can take care of that, kind of based on what they know, I mean, if the council says that's what they'd like to do, would that be?
Plan commission can require that, and that's what we're gonna do.
Yes, sir. That's, that's something that, and I think that the, you know, we do have two members of the city council that sit on our planning commission, Mr. Smotherman and Mr. Young and, and staff, and we all have memories of these public hearings, and when the plans come through, we, we look to make sure that those issues are addressed and we discuss those issues at the planning commission level.
Mr. Murphy, you might as well go on and get it worked out, because that's gonna be required at the planning commission.
Counselman Young, we will.
I know you will, but I'm telling you.
Yeah, yeah.
That's one thing that I'm hearing from the audience, and it's, and it's actually a fairly easy fix.
Counselman Young, I'm, I'm hearing you loud and clear. Eight feet, something substantial, and we will report back as to the specifics to staff so they'll have it in the file once we've spoken to the neighbors and talked to Matt a little bit about what's, what's gonna be the best material.
And don't forget the neighbors. They need to be informed.
Mr. Murphy, also, you know, we had a comment, which I think is a valid comment, about there being longer assurances about access to Van Cleve Lane. Is it something that the owner would, would put, I don't know what the legality would be, Mr. Tindall, a deed restriction or something that, I don't think it would be appropriate for this facility to ever have access to Van Cleve Lane. How can we make sure that that doesn't, that doesn't happen?
Well, I'm, I'm sure they'd be willing to put a deed restriction, and Matt may be able to help us as well, but we certainly could put something that runs for the land in the deed that is in perpetuity, essentially.
One of the approaches to this a few projects ago, about a year or so ago now, was the property owner actually deeded their right to access a particular street for a particular distance. They actually deeded that right of access to the city, got recorded, so that's nothing, I mean, that can only be changed if city council would, in the future, approve it. Now, we all know that fifty to a hundred years from now, this whole neighborhood's gonna be different, and it may be well appropriate to approve it, but the developer or the future owner of the land could not do it on his or her own. It would take action of the city to, to accomplish that. So that's something, if the property owners are willing to consider that, that's something that might be appropriate.
Well, and I think that is something a hundred years from now, when we're all along and on, if someone comes in and wants to buy the entire subdivision, then, you know, I think it would, obviously, if it had to go into the city council to approve another use. But what I would like to ensure is that we don't have, I'm sure that you guys don't have plans on selling the hospital, but if for some reason you get an offer you can't refuse, then someone comes in and they have a different idea of having access, we want to make sure that we feel comfortable saying access is not gonna be granted on to Van Cleve.
I can, I can tell a couple of things. I'm not familiar with what Mr. Ives is talking about, but the property will have to be resubdivided to combine the existing parcel with this new parcel, and there's many times where we restrict access through the plat for not having access, and that's as simple as a note a lot of times. The other thing was, our very first meeting to talk about this zoning project, the first thing's out of planning staff's mouth was, you're not wanting access on Van Cleve Lane, are you? And we said no. And so I think there's a lot of safety in retaining that commitment, not that we'd want to go back on it, but a lot of fail safes.
Can I speak a little bit more, 'cause I've worked with Mr. Ives on the drainage, it's obviously Matt's bailiwick, but my client's happy to deed the access rights to the city. That gives the neighbors some assurances long-term. And a hundred years from now, when Mayor McFarland's great-grandson is the mayor, then maybe we'll revisit, we'll revisit it at that point. But that gives some assurances to the neighbors, absolutely, and we will follow up. There will be a second reading, obviously, of this, and we'll follow up with some specifics we've worked out with the neighbor as, as to the fencing.
Could somebody speak to the concern about blasting and the, you know, this is middle Tennessee, and it's five feet down, we're gonna find limestone, so.
Six inches.
Well, six inches down, we're gonna find limestone.
Hey, Matt, would you also address that one question about the limestone and the water running on it, kind of along with that?
Sure. The blasting, anybody within two hundred and fifty or three hundred feet of this property will have a pre-blast survey. That's required by any blasting within the state of Tennessee. So essentially, before that blasting contractor can put the first charge off, he has to send somebody around, take pictures of the houses that are within that radius before the blast. That way, if there is a claim of damage afterwards, they can come back and investigate that, and obviously, insurance would take care of those problems. There are multiple safety features during the blasting process. There are multiple horns before the blast goes off. Any explosives either have to be locked up very securely on-site or have to be removed and brought back each night and each morning to the job site. As far as the groundwater running on the bedrock itself, that does occur in some places. Obviously, bedrock will be considered a restrictive layer, just like clay can be considered a restrictive layer. So if you have clay, it can retain the same amount of water, called the perched water table is what they call it, just like the limestone can.
You know, some of the prerequisites that you were talking about as far as taking pictures, you'll be taking pictures of interior and exterior, right?
They go all the way around. As long as they've got somebody home, somebody will let them in, they'll take it, they want to take as many pictures as possible because that protects them as much as possible.
I think it's very important that you get the interior also, because a lot of times blasting, it affects the interior and not the exterior.
Yes, ma'am. I agree. And they will also have to put seismographs in certain locations to monitor the size of those blasts. So it is a very sensitive subject whenever that starts happening during construction. And if there is ever an occurrence that is called into question, then the local fire marshal and the state real marshal will shut that blaster down until they can come out and actually observe one of their blast protocols and make sure they're doing everything in proper procedure.
Hey, I want, let me ask Mr. Taylor one more question, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
No, about, still about water, just, so from what you said earlier with the retention pond, does the general flow go from south to north?
Yes, sir.
Right here? So...
Yeah, we would direct nothing back toward the neighbors. It all runs from south onto us and into Wilkinson Pike.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going through my list. We've hit drainage, we've hit security, we've talked about Van Cleve entrance on Van Cleve Lane, update on the widening of Wilkinson Pike, blasting. I think... I've got one more if you...
Yes.
I hate to put anybody on the spot, but one of the things, you know, one of our biggest assets for our community is Stones River Battlefield, probably more people visit that than anything in our community. So I wish somebody would speak to the concern about the incursion on the degrading of the park experience. I think it's, you know, to me, that, that is a, is a good concern, too. So I'd, would you mind speaking to that? I know you're new, but...
So can I move this down?
Sure.
Well, Mayor and Commissioners, I'm Brenda Waters. I'm the new superintendent at Stones River National Battlefield, and I've been there since the first part of May, so this is all new to me. But we are going to be impacted, there's, there's no doubt about it. When you build around the battlefield, the experience of people that come from all over the place to learn about what happened there, you know, a hundred and fifty-plus years ago, their experience is gonna be different when you build buildings around us. They can't stand there and experience what, what would have happened. And Dr. Serna is correct, the slaughter pens, those are right there across the street, and they are very significant to what happened during the battle, and many men lost their lives there. So for us, we've been, we have had many discussions with Dr. Woods, and that's been really good. And we understand that the city is growing and there's a need for all of this, but for us, the better, the further away construction or, you know, buildings are, the better it would be for the park. Things that concern us are, are, you know, water flowing over into the park, light pollution, screening, getting people to and from the battlefield safely. We have seen a significant increase in use, three hundred and forty percent from last July to this July, increase in use at the battlefield. So you're seeing more and more people understand the value of having a big, open, green space. So the more that we can have your help in protecting it, the better that will be for us. I think, I just think it's gonna be really important, as Murfreesboro continues to grow, to have, have the battlefield protected. And if I can answer specific questions, I'd be happy to do so.
Lighting of the parking lot and all that, I mean, to restrict, made me think of something when she said that.
Mr. Baumler can attest to this. Whenever we do our site plan, we're required to submit a photometric or a lighting plan that essentially shows we are not allowing light pollution to leave our site, to create glare on the neighboring properties or the neighboring right-of-way. All those have to be shielded to direct the light back in toward the site and not back toward the road or onto our neighboring properties. Our, during our neighborhood meeting, I believe the park service brought up the native species, I believe somebody else mentioned that tonight, we committed that, you know, during any landscape design, before that's submitted to the city, we would allow the, not only review that with the urban environmental department of the city, but also sit down with the battlefield and make sure they're comfortable with that. And one reason that we requested the CMR zoning was because it heavily restricted the use of the property, and it also restricted the height of the property allowable building there. And, and that's why, that's another reason why we planned a one- and two-story building versus going three or four or five, like a lot of the other buildings are going in the Gateway District out there. And then we've also, at the suggestion of Mr. Smotherman, I believe, incorporate, or committed to incorporate and mimic the split rail fence that's on the battlefield side onto our side of the road to try to enhance that corridor, if you will, and mimic the other side in an aesthetic sense.
Okay. Any other questions?
I got one more question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Baumler, or someone could, we've heard a little bit about the widening of Wilkinson Pike. What's the plan there? What's, when, how, et cetera?
The widening of Wilkinson Pike?
Do you happen to know?
Yeah, the, it's gonna be a three-lane cross-section with a continuous center turn lane. What I've been told the latest is, is that we're, the plans are almost complete, then we'll enter the right-of-way acquisition phase and expect to begin work late two thousand seventeen, early two thousand eighteen.
So we've not done the right-of-way acquisition yet?
Not yet.
What was the final total of beds being, where, what, where are we going to? I wasn't sure, somebody said two and a half times, and I wasn't sure about that being...
Yes, sir. Our current bed capacity is one hundred and one beds. Our final bed capacity will be two hundred and forty-nine beds.
Okay. So that's not one oh one plus two forty-nine?
No, sir.
The total with the one oh one is two forty-nine, so it's not two and a half times?
That is correct. It is not.
Well, let me make a comment. This, this is the tough ones, because this is a service that our community needs, and this is someone who has been a good corporate partner to our community and done exactly what they said they were going to do as far as, I remember when this was first proposed, it's a, it's an asset to our community to have trust point in our community and for our citizens. But when you grow, there's this difficult balance between infringing upon existing property owners, and these people have been here all of their lives. Some, some of them have lived in this location as long as they've been in Murfreesboro, some of them as long as they've lived. This is, this is a difficult decision to decide what is in the best, what is the right thing to do, but I can tell you, folks, council, if this is approved, will be watching to see how, what is said and what goes on the ground meets expectations, because it constrains us to be more forgiving and more trusting. Trust is built, trust point, trust is built by your actions and by the evidence of what you say and what you do. So I think you, you know the concerns of the neighborhood, you know the concerns of council, and if you meet those expectations, then you'll continue to be a good corporate citizen. And I'm not trying to be the teacher here, but I'm just trying to say, this is something that's putting us in a difficult position to try to balance that, but it all really relies upon you to do what you say you're gonna do.
Counselman Shacklet, I appreciate those comments very much, and it is, it is our intent and it is our representation and promise to this council that we will meet our obligations. our obligations, that we will continue to be good citizens and good stewards of the resources that we are entrusted with in our community, including the care of our, of our citizens. Uh, with respect to our neighbors, we are going to continue to have a dialogue with them, hopefully that will, will endure for the next many years as we evolve the healthcare delivery both at our hospital, but within Rutherford County and Murfreesboro in particular, um, over time. So I appreciate your comments, and, um, you have my, my, my word, my representation on behalf of myself and my company, that we will, uh, we will meet those obligations.
Thank you. I think we closed it, we closed it over here. Any other questions?
Mayor Chris Blomley.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, um, with this project, um, since we're going to have buildings going up and step, I think consideration for putting, putting electrical lines underneath would be really good for that whole area there. So that would be beneficial, I think, to the visitors as you're, you're considering this project, and it would be very helpful to the future of what we have out there. So that would be great. And we're considering a multi-use path on the other side of, on our side of the property to be able to get folks safely across from, you know, one side to the other Thompson Lane and then down over and connecting to the visitor's center. And I know that there's plans, and we're discussing a multi-use path on the other side of Van Cleve that then could go all the way to the new, um, visitor's center and connecting people then to that nice green space, which should be good.
Sure.
So those are, those are positive things, but getting some of those power lines down would be helpful for the park.
Mr. Blomley, if I'm correct, Mr. Blomley as well, but we don't allow new development, everything has to go underground, does it not?
Uh, it, it's correct. There are some of the larger transmission lines that get to be very difficult, very expensive to put underground.
Right.
We've seen them on some of our major corridors. I'm not sure about the size of this line, but I do recall a conversation, uh, either at MED or with our staff of looking to see if these lines could go underground, so we will explore that.
Yeah.
But part of it's going to depend on the size and expense of it.
And I think what you're going to see is the widening of Wilkinson Pike goes along, you know, with the power lines that go down Wilkinson Pike, when you drive, they're very close to the, to what shoulder there is on Wilkinson Pike already. So I think that's going to be, Underground Utilities will be a necessity along that, that whole, whole corridor, which will help the View Shad as well.
Okay, that, that, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, and thank you for asking me to, to say...
Any questions? Any other questions? Okay, I'll do it. I'll make a motion that we pass the recommendation.
We have a motion, uh, that we adopt.
Approve the rezoning.
Rezoning.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright, for call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move into, consider recommendations of the principal planner regarding scheduling public hearings to consider zoning along East Clark Boulevard to PRD, a plan of service of annexation petition along Barfield Road, zone, zoning along Barfield Road, uh, RZ, simultaneous with annexation, plan of services and annexation petition along Old Salem Road, zoning along Old Salem Road, CF, simultaneous with annexation, plan of services and annexation petition along New Salem Highway, zoning along New Salem, Salem Highway RS-10, simultaneous with annexation, and amendments to the sign ordinance regarding addition of two additional types of signs, in, signs and easements, and delete height limitations on attached signs in the central business CBD district.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. During its regular meeting on September 7th, the planning commission conducted public...
Excuse me a minute, I think there's two more, uh, on the second page, after the sign ord, uh, sign ordinance. No, I'm sorry, I missed it. You, you got it, thank you.
Okay.
During its regular meeting on September 7th, the planning commission conducted public hearings on these matters and then discussed the matters and took action to recommend their approval. Zoning application for approximately 1.2 acres along East Clark Boulevard to be rezoned from RS-15 to PRD, an annexation plan of services and annexation petition for 32-point acres along Barfield Road, a zoning application for approximately 17.2 acres along Barfield Road to be zoned RZ simultaneous with annexation, an annexation plan of services and annexation petition for approximately 84 acres along Old Salem Road, a zoning application for approximately 34.1 acres located along Old Salem Road to be zoned CF simultaneous with annexation, and approximately 17.6 acres to be rezoned from OG to CF, an annexation plan of services and annexation petition for approximately 109.5 acres located along New Salem Highway, a zoning application for approximately 109.5 acres located along New Salem Highway to be zoned RS-10 simultaneous with annexation, and finally, the proposed amendments to the sign ordinance regarding the addition of two additional types of signs, signs and easements, and to delete height limitations on attached signs in the CBD. Uh, the planning commission did conduct public hearings on all these matters in one night. There was public input on a number of the items, uh, not an overwhelmingly large amount of public input on any one item, but there pretty much was consistent public input on all of the items. Uh, and, uh, we need to schedule these for public hearings.
Did we, uh, Ms. Macheta, was it November 3, correct? November 3 is our recommendation.
I will not be here November the 3rd, but you guys can. I'll be in New York. Vice Mayor Young, I'm sure can handle.
All right. So moved, November 3rd.
Second.
I can't even get a second on that.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris. Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Consider recommendations of the airport manager of, uh, to approve a contract with Queen's Tree Surgery for the approach lighting and clearing project.
Mayor and members of the city council, uh, as you know, last summer, we completed the, uh, construction on the runway and several taxiway connectors. And as part of that, we're continuing to work on the approaches into the airport. We're coordinating with the FAA and the state, uh, looking at, uh, the different, uh, ballpark lights and also looking at the trees on the north end of the airport. As part of that, we have an area of about, uh, 5.42 acres and another 1.32 acres that were identified in our surveys that contain some trees that penetrate the new approach. And, uh, we've worked well with our neighbors and looked at all of the environmental issues and looked to clear some of those, uh, acreages of trees. Uh, two out of the three properties are undeveloped, commercially zoned properties. Uh, and one of them is the State Farm campus where there was roughly 18 trees identified that will need to be replaced. We're working with our neighbors in full cooperation with them. And, uh, for State Farm, for example, they have a beautiful, immaculate campus. We're going to be replacing those trees, we're lower-growing trees that are similar to what they use in their landscaping. Uh, we've received one bid, uh, from, from the, uh, Queen's Tree Surgery out of Nashville, Tennessee, for the amount of $110,242, of which 95% will be funded through our federal and state grant for this project. Um, if you have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them at this time.
Any questions? Move we approve the recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
We'll consider for recommendations of the interim Parks and Recreation Director, uh, change order number three for the Miracle Field.
You missed the...
I'm sorry. Um, it's okay, Chris, we'll let Ms. Jackson go ahead, this is payback for putting Doogie Howser on my iPad. I just now figured how to get that off of my, off of this thing, so. For those of y'all, I get my new thing back, and there's a picture of, uh, Murfreesboro with a rabbit and a picture of Doogie Howser and Bob the Builder on there, so, thanks, Chris. Well, you'll go to the end of the agenda tonight. All right, Ms. Jackson, change order number, uh, three for the Miracle Field.
Good evening, and thank you. Uh, the Miracle Field, as you know, is currently being developed at McKnight Park. It's a project that we're, of course, all very proud, um, to be a part of. It includes an accessible athletic field and, and the amenities that serve special needs, um, that serve children with special needs. The project is a partnership with Project One Four, um, a charitable, a charitable foundation, um, formed by former Murfreesboro resident and current major league, major league pitcher, David Price, um, along with, of course, the city of Murfreesboro. Um, Mr. and Mrs. Price, David's parents, are providing the leadership for the project and currently fundraising to cover, um, a majority of the project's cost. Loson Associates Incorporated is providing the professional design services, and the project administration and Trinity Construction is currently constructing the project. Um, last month, we came before you with a, um, an, where you approved a change order for a significant playground upgrade in the amount of $175,424. As detailed in the letter that we attached in your packet, there are additional fees that are associated with those upgrades and substitution that have been presented by Trinity Construction in the amount of $91,173.75. Loson Associates has identified those fees as true cost and recommend that they be added to the project, which we have presented here before you. Um, the impact to the project, the original comp, the, uh, original contract amount was $2,828,067. Um, with the change orders that we approved last month, including those upgrades as well as a water and sewer tap fee, it increased to $3,017,798. Um, with the, with these additional fees, it brings the contract total amount to $3,108,971.75. To date, $775,000 have been pledged for the project, and $2,750,000 is available in CIP funding. Project One Four continues to seek donations and has additional fundraising events and opportunities scheduled. And, um, I would welcome any questions. Mr. Laird, Mr. Thomas Laird is also here, he has been providing leadership on behalf of our department, um, and can also answer questions about the project.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We'll now move to the Adams Tennis Complex, amendment to agreement between the city and MTSU.
Thank you. On July 10th, 2014, the city of Murfreesboro entered an agreement with Middle Tennessee State University Foundation and Middle Tennessee State University. Um, through the course of the construction, we made changes for upgrades to some of the projects, including scoreboards, umpire chairs, the storefront and the si, and the signage. These total improvements amounted to $91,688.90. Just to clarify, these decisions were made during the construction, I'm not here to seek additional funds, um, but to just amend the am, the amendment, amend the agreement with MTSU regarding, um, their contributions. Um, we can also consider, however, a court curtain in this amendment, um, which comes at a cost of $3,495, a cost to be shared with MTSU and that was recently, um, supported and approved by the tennis commi, uh, by the tennis committee. Um, in order to address the funding of these, of these changes, it's proposed that the city of Murfreesboro and Middle Tennessee State University equally share in the cost of these change orders, um, each funding $45,844.45 towards that buy, that, towards that balance for the final construction cost. Um, and what we're recommending is, tonight, is an approval to the proposed amendment, uh, to the agreement, subject to approval by the city attorney. Um, the considerations for the, for, for items such as the curtains, um, it has also been suggested that we round up to $50,000 in the agreement amendment, um, to ensure a, um, clean bookkeeping aspect to that. Welcome any questions that they have.
I'll move for approval, unless anybody's got any questions.
This is not really something that is, um, from the initial construction, this is more of seeing improvements that need to be made and...
Correct.
Yeah, there's, there's, some of it was from the initial construction that they made the decisions. I can, the, the only thing I think we're adding is talking about the, the screen, which was like $3,500 that MTSU is going to split with us, but we looked at a whole lot of different ways to do that. Basically, when you go in there and start walking to the west on the right side, it's got all those windows that you can look out and watch matches, um, and that kind of keeps it from looking like a dungeon down through there.
Yeah.
Um, well, when you're playing from the opposite end, it creates a glare on that glass. The screen, yeah, we looked at a lot of different ways to do it, whether to tent it or just block it out completely, but it really, it's not good to block it out, the windows are a real good feature. So what we're going to do is get a screen, basically, that, um, you know, you can see through it nice and easily, but it takes all the glare off of it. And so 1,750 bucks or whatever was a, a significantly cheaper than I thought we would remedy that, that issue.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider recommendations of the Information Technology Director to approve a task order number 12 under the Basic Consulting Agreement, Weston Engineering Incorporated.
First off, um, Mayor McFarland, you didn't have any help getting that off of your screen, did you? Like, from your, from your children?
I'm not going to tell you that.
Okay, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of...
You're, you're one step away from being put under other business.
I'm getting close. City of Murfreesboro has been in the process of implementing an ERP system in, in three phases. The first two phases, financials and HR payroll. The first two phases were successfully implemented with the, the help of Weston Project Management Services. The additional task order in front of you tonight is to extend Weston Services to continue, to continue assisting the city of Murfreesboro implementation team in solution planning, coordination of implementation, and issue tracking and resolution services required for the installation of our third phase, which is the Tyler nCode Court System. It is at the request of the IT Department for the council to approve task quarter 12. Careful planning and project management are vital in the successful launching of our new municipal court software. The cost associated with Weston Services is anticipated to be approximately $124,560. The total amount has been included and approved by city council in IT's fiscal year 2017 budget. I open for any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Lillen?
Move for approval.
So, this was improved, I'm sorry, 2017 budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The funding was...
Okay.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Lillen.
Thank you.
We'll now consider recommendations of the city manager regarding a contract with Kenan Calhoun Workshop to conduct a citywide space needs analysis.
Mayors of, members of city council, as you know, this was an item during one of your city council retreats. In a growing city, we face growing demands for office space. And with the relocation, the Murphysboro Police Department, it's giving us an opportunity to step back citywide to look long range, you know, five, 10, 15 years out. How much office space do we need? Not just office space, space for our city departments. Where does it need to be located so that our employees can work efficiently and we can provide excellent customer service? We enjoyed a very good relationship with Kenan Calhoun Workshop, who conducted a very similar study for us at the police department, and it would be our recommendation, as we discussed at the retreat, to engage Kenan Calhoun to conduct this study, where they'll look at our existing space, any code deficiencies, analyze the space that might be needed, and then looking at how work groups might be put together, as well as provide some budget estimates. So this is us doing some long-range planning for our city departments. Be happy to answer any questions.
What's the contract cost?
It's $225,000 plus a small amount of reimbursable expenses, and we did include this in this year's operating budget. We began to take a look at that. Putting a department in the wrong place at, at the wrong time can really, you know, cause us some other financial costs down the road, so we do know it's expensive, but there is a significant amount of work.
How long is this project, is this a six-month project?
I think it's about a year.
I would almost suggest that we have the talent here in the city to do this internally, but I know how our departments are overworked and, in some cases, understaffed, and you're always in the process of hiring good people. So, that's a lot of money to spend, but I think it would be spent wisely if we did this and not try to do this internally, because it would just increase the load of our present department heads and specialists.
Is this something that, is this something that we bid out, like, that we send out for a bid, or is it just, we just ask somebody and they tell us how much?
As a professional service, you're, it's not required to, to bid, but we had an outstanding experience with Kenan Calhoun, who did this very same thing for the police department before we acquired the Highland Avenue building. Before that building was, you know, before, you know, brought to you for a discussion, we had hired Kenan Calhoun to do a space needs study for police, and it came back that we needed a building of about 125,000 square feet with this much parking, and then the Highland Avenue property became available to us, and it really did mirror what that space needs study showed us.
It says 225,000, but then down here it says Phase One, estimated cost 237,500.
237,500, yeah, I stand corrected.
So the cost is 237,500?
Plus some reimbursable expenses. Mr. Cannon estimated those to be about $1,500.
Okay.
There'll be copies and archives.
I know we discussed it at the retreat, but I had no idea that a study for space would come anywhere close to that cost. I mean, I'm, I'm quite honestly kind of blown away by that number.
Makes you want to be a consultant, doesn't it?
Gee, well, I mean...
We, we do have 25 departments, those aren't 25 separate buildings, but it is literally going through all our city departments to say, five, 10, 15 years, how many employees are we going to have? Who do they need to work with? Looking at our existing buildings, how much space do they have? Can they be added on to the development of budgets? This is not an, I likewise saw the number and talked to Mr. Cannon about that, but there is a tremendous amount of work that is involved here. And he is present if you have any questions.
What's the timeframe? What's the timeframe for this being done? I don't, I don't see a timeframe.
I believe... See if I can find that real quick. Mr. Cannon is present. We... Forward.
I mean, we can hire a city employee for $60,000, send him out there, let him start looking at it.
Meeting, council members. The question was the timeframe? I don't know that we really established another timeframe. We think it would probably take us in the six-month range, but it's dependent on us being able to schedule meetings and reviews. The fee is composed of our structural engineer coming in reviewing the capacity of the buildings, mechanical electrical engineer reviewing the condition of the buildings, and then our programming consultant working with us, the same one that worked with us on the police headquarters. So it's a, I know it's a lot, a series of people compiled together.
What is it that we get back? What, what are we buying? What are...
That's a good question. I would ask that, too. You get a documentation of the existing buildings, all of them, then a, for lack of a better term, a spreadsheet documenting current, current uses and projected uses, and then there will actually be a series of conceptual diagrams of how to reconfigure all the spaces, and how to reuse the existing police headquarters building and that whole area back there, all those series of buildings.
As we begin to get data...
It's almo, it's almost, it's like pre-conceptual design, actually, the time we're done. So it's, it's more than just a study.
I think my comment will be, I, I thank you very much. My, my comment would be that, you know, I think the easy answer is going to be, we need more space, and we're going to need more space 10 years from now, 15 years from now. When we go to make some changes, where we actually have a plan in mind, hey, we need to expand, we need space for X, Y, or Z, it might feel a little easier to absorb a cost like a quarter of a million dollars, if we feel like we can save a quarter of a million dollars on a project. I don't know, maybe I'm being short-sighted here, but I was really kind of taken aback by the number, and I'm glad you explained it a little bit, as far as there is going to be a lot of professional services provided here, but, again, right now, to, to know, to get the answer that we're going to need more space is going to be...
Let me, let me maybe suggest this, because I'm hearing some hesitation. Let me, you know, pull this recommendation back for tonight's meeting. One thing that might be helpful is for you to see some of the work that Mr. Cannon did in the police, to give you a visual about how we're going to deal with space for the rest of the city departments, and be glad to get you some more information, meet with you one-on-one, and explain it a little further. Here's what I know. City Hall is full. We've got, you know, Parks and Rec Headquarters operation that's operating in a former house that's, that's crowded. We've got space challenges for records. There are other departments that are experiencing, you know, shortage of space to work in, and how do we try to organize all of this in a way that we know how to grow smart, but also do it efficiently and provide customer service? You know, the police building is, is old and has got some, some issues. Is renovating that building the right decision, or, you know, building next to it and, and doing something else with the police building, you know, what option does that look like? So we've got some very expensive space need decisions coming forward, and so the idea that we want to think comprehensively, we think can make some sense, but let me spend some time with you, Mr. Cannon, and we'll, we'll come back to you shortly.
And, and also to cut, help cut the cost, do we not have employees that already, with the city, that could do some of this? I mean, do we not have employees of the department that can also help to help cut the cost? We utilize a department we already have?
Okay. We'll, we'll come back to you with, with some more information.
I'm not advocating either way. I think one thing that is going to be a huge decision we're going to have to make, when the police department moves out of their existing building, something, and this is maybe outside of what the scope they're talking about, but we're going to have to somehow come up with some kind of analysis on how much it's going to cost us to renovate that existing building. Can we retrofit that to be able to use that? Is it better to tear it down, use the existing parking lot? Because when the new county garage comes on, you know, we got to feel like that some of that parking from this current city garage is going to be moved to the county garage, so there may be some options. You know, the Parks and Recreation Garage that we have there, it's what they're storing right now, you know, we've got a valuable piece of land to figure out what to do with it, so I think that may be part of what we, we look at as well.
Mayor, if I can interrupt, I think that question's exactly what Mr. Lyons is trying to get us to be able to help you answer as part of this. When we said conceptual diagrams, that's what we were saying. We would, we're analyzing that existing building and helping you understand what you can and cannot do to it, and projecting budgets for its renovation.
So are you talking about conceptual for 25 to 29 buildings, or are you just talking about conceptual for the police station location?
As, as we defined in our conversations, it's kind of this whole block is what they were, we targeted. You've got, what, I forget how many buildings on this block, but...
There's 25 departments involved, but, but it's not 25 buildings.
Yeah.
He's pulling it, so...
All right, let's discuss this a little in more detail, when you can talk with all of us about nuances of the proposal and what we have. I think that would be, I think it's smart to not make a quarter of a million dollar decision without really all of us feeling comfortable.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Sir, I know what the, excuse me here, I know what the answer to this question is, but I'm going to ask you, is that a competitive bid throughout the country? Sounds like a strange question, but it should be asked.
No, it's a reasonable question. I find consistently, we are competitive in our fees, and my consultants are competitive in their fees.
Told you I knew the answer. I understand. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Wright, have a few beer permits?
We do. We have a special event beer permit application for the Discovery Center for an event next spring on May 5th, 2017. We have another special event beer application for Oakland's Association for an event coming up this year on November the 19th. Both of these applications are in order, and we recommend approval. Additionally, we have a new location at 505 Kason Lane, Suite E, for a restaurant. That permit is in order. We do need it to finish, for the location to finish up their building codes inspections before we could issue a permit if you approve it. We have an ownership change and name change for a grocery market at 407 South Manny Avenue. That location also needs to finish up their building codes inspections, but otherwise that application is in order. And we have a restaurant ownership name change at, ownership and name change at 1935 South Church Street. That application is also in order and does need to finish up their building codes inspections, so we would recommend approval of those and issue those permits once the building codes inspections have been completed on those. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions if you have any.
We can make one, we can make one motion and approve all of them.
You may.
And they're all in good order.
They are, pending those final inspections.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Your Board and Commission appointments, we've got Mr. Lamar Dixon, who we're going to recommend to you for the next meeting for the Greenway Projects Committee. Any statements?
No, sir, not tonight.
Mr. Crumley is here for other business.
Very quickly, to use the competitive seal proposal process requires council approval. Chief Folks, Chief Dura are ready to go and find a construction manager at risk for the public safety training facility. We ask your permission to use that competitive seal proposal process. Same process we've used very successfully on police headquarters, and we're finding the value in it already on Fire Station Number Four.
Yeah, and I want to go on record as saying, I think this is a wise decision that staff made, that, you know, when you have a construction manager at risk, you put people who are used to dealing with construction projects, and you let staff focus on running the business that needs to be run and not worry about managing a construction project, so it...
Does that, does it eliminate the need for a, an actual bid process? I mean, do, do we still go out and get a bid and say, hey, how much are you going to charge us to build this building?
There, there are seal proposals for the pricing, but it's more of a negotiated dollar cost at the end. We would choose the builder based on their professional qualifications, and then we would begin to work on negotiating a contract with them. The, the real advantage we're seeing out of the construction manager at risk is that the architect and the builder are playing on the same team much, much earlier in the process. Using Highland Avenue Police Headquarters, the coordination between the folks who actually are building that project and the architects have saved something in the magnitude of $2.5 million already on the, on the building, on the finishing of that, that structure. And it ranges just from, from things that the construction industry knows in terms of current processes, technology, and materials, that they're bringing to the table as a partner with the architect, and, and the savings result in our pockets.
Wouldn't we expect them to do that anyway? That all sounds like stuff that I would absolutely expect a builder...
When you, when you take a set of plans and put it on the table and then ask people to bid on it, that process of, of what I like to think of as value engineering goes away. They bid on a set of plans and they produce that, that building to that set of plans.
So it keeps us from having to do the change orders, too?
It, it eliminates change orders, because what you have is a maximum guaranteed price when we negotiate with that construction manager at risk. If they find things that are outside of what was originally scoped and, and the process, they're at risk for that financially. However, if there are savings that they find, we benefit from those savings, so it's, it's proven to be a really effective method.
From the construction standpoint, I could, if you put it in...
I'm sure, yeah.
Residential, if you put it in, it's like an architect designing a set of plans for a homeowner, and then you bid that set of plans and you find out it's way, way more than what they wanted to spend, so it allows you to start that process much sooner.
Yeah, the only thing that kind of grieves me about this a little bit is just the idea that we don't know kind of what we're getting ourselves into on the front end, from a perspective of, we went out, we shopped it around, you know, this contractor would be here, this contractor would be here, I mean, we don't see that in a COB. I guess I would like to, you know, it would be a perfect scenario if we said, all right, look, the, we think the police headquarters is going to be $40 million, and it ends up being 34, right? I mean, that, that's all great, but it's not if we think, we think it's going to be 40, and it still ends up costing us 48, and all we're saying is, well, it probably would have cost us 52. You know, I mean, how do we kind of know whether or not it's...
I, I wish I'd brought the spreadsheets from the Highland Avenue Police Headquarters project to show you the multiple pages of proposed value engineering changes that the construction manager at risk has brought to the table, and each one of those require a yes/no decision on our part as to whether that is, is something we want to do and save those dollars, or it's something we don't want to change. We consult with our architect in terms of, you know, what does this do to the integrity of the project as you've designed it? It's, it's been a real eye-opener on Highland Avenue. One of the other advantages, particularly in the bidding market that we're seeing in middle Tennessee right now, is that that construction... It's been a real eye-opener on Highland Avenue. One of the other advantages, particularly in the bidding market that we're seeing in middle Tennessee right now, is that that construction manager at risk brings his quality subs to the table already priced guaranteed when we sit down and finish that negotiation. When we go to the low bid process, we, we don't have that assurance of the quality in those subcontractors. We're again kind of at the, the, we're almost at the peril of good general contractors to select folks that not only may be competitive in their pricing, but will perform the work well. We've had examples in some of the remodeling of the fire stations where we've had to go back and just refuse the work that was done in some areas because the quality of the work was so poor. By having that general, having that construction manager at risk financially, he's going to bring subs to the table that will produce the quality work at the price. Will it produce the absolute lowest price every time? I'm not sure it will. But will it get us the best value for the money we're spending in these buildings? I'm pretty well convinced it does.
How do we select the, how do we select the contractor?
We, we put this out on the street, and there will be general contractors, builders, that will submit their qualifications to us, and then we'll usually go to a shortlist. For Highland Avenue, I think we had six proposals, shortlisted three for interview, hired one. For Fire Station Four, we received four proposals, shortlisted three, wound up hiring one. It's not, it doesn't scare the general contractors out there that this method somehow puts them subject to an additional risk. I think they're at that risk anyway when they enter into a project on a remodel in particular, but...
I mean, like physically, who chooses, who chooses the contractor?
We generally have a different committee each time. Knowing this is public safety work, we'll probably have representatives of both fire and police, purchasing department, probably someone from city administration on a team. We rarely do it with, with less than four or five members on a selection panel.
I've recently had somebody ask me why they didn't get a chance at the Police Building. I mean, you know, a representative of a company, and I really didn't have a very good answer. And it would seem like a logical fit that if we're putting it out on the street, that they would have at least known about how it got, how it got put together, and, and that, that we would be actually getting around to ask more than just, you know, a couple of people. So I guess, this is part of why I'm questioning. I'm, I'm trying to figure out if this is putting, you know, if we're putting 40 or 50 million dollar decisions in one or two or three people's hands, that, you know, maybe it could have been a $30 million decision if it's for bid, and yet might not be 30, and we might have to do some change orders, and it ends up being 36, but 36 is still, still better than 50. I, I'm, I'm not comfortable with the fact that three or four committee members would choose that.
We, it'd be a recommendation, Mr. Lyons, to the City Council. It's not, the final decision doesn't rest with the committee. It's, you know, we would screen the applicants. The criteria is set out in the proposals, just, you know, like in every other, you know, proposal that we take, whether it's a competitive sealed or an RFP, we make that recommendation perhaps to a board and commission, and then on to the mayor and council.
I might add, we have a service called Vendor Link that we may be changing, but that's what we're in right now. Mr. Boyers left. I was looking to see if he was here. Anybody interested in getting notices of any bids that we have, they just need to go in and sign up. It's free, and they can choose what kind of services they're interested in. So if we have a construction bid, they should be able to be notified of that, in addition to our ads in the paper. That's something that they would need to do, any kind of bid. Anybody that I know of that's interested in something, I've contacted purchasing and had them explain how to do the process. So I would highly suggest you, anybody you know that's interested, that they would want to register with Vendor Link, at least as long as that's the process we're using.
Would it be appropriate for us to, when you say narrow it down to three and then pick one, when you make your recommendation, that we could see, you know, how, you know, how that flowed a little bit? Would that help us be a little bit more educated as to what your process? You wouldn't necessarily need names, but even if we just understood, you know, the process a little bit more?
I think we've presented the recommendations on the construction manager at risk, no different than it had been a bid. I think we've been showing you each and every contractor that submitted, and then who we judged based on their experience and the types of buildings that we're looking at and their qualifications, who we've recommended. Excuse me. But we'll, we'll obviously provide you as much information as you'd like on any of these submittals that, that we're interested in being the construction manager at risk. We see a lot more financial information about the construction companies in this method than we do in just a straight bid.
It does come back before us, though, right?
Pardon me?
It definitely comes back to us.
Absolutely.
Okay. That's what, I thought you said the committee made the decision, so.
I move we approve the recommendation.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lelance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Other business, I had one item. I know we had a town hall downtown back in, was that June or July, Mr. Smotherman? June, I think it was.
June.
That was super hot. So, and we, we...
It's about to be...
It's going to be yesterday.
Yeah, yeah. It was September, October. But I think it'd be a good idea, if the council is okay with this, you know, to move that to another area of the, the community. And we've got a lot that's going on in the west side of town right now, especially, we've had a lot talking about apartments at the West Park that's going on. We've got lots of different things. So we'd like to sketch, set a time to do a town hall on the west side of town in, in the next couple, two, three weeks, if you guys are okay with that. I know Councilman Wade was talking and mentioning the same thing to Mr. Lyons, so is that okay with you guys to start out on the west side of town? And then we'll work our way around to where we'll have the, do the entire city, and then what I envision is circling back and having one more in the downtown area. That's something. So, all right, we'll get that scheduled. And probably we'll do that on a, if it's possible, Mr. Lyons, I think it may be good to do that on a Sunday afternoon again. And I hate to make staff come out on a Sunday afternoon, but it's a whole lot easier for residents to come out on a Sunday afternoon than it is to come out on, during the weeknights.
We'll go into...
All right, any other business? Got a MTSU ballgame Saturday?
Kickoff six o'clock, playing Louisiana Tech. It's blackout night.
Yeah.
It's going to be a blast.
It's going to be fun. And there's another ballgame on at two o'clock for... Two, two small teams, or... Yeah, two small teams, one in East Tennessee that's going to be playing. So, all right, we'll stand adjourned.